Okay, thanks for coming tonight, everybody, and we'll start the meeting with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, we'll start with the approval of the agenda. Anything to change, correct, add? Paul? Nope, I think Dan.
No.
I've got one thing. I'd like to add under G3 new business, the four-way stop at Second and Main that was temporary. I'd like to add that as a discussion for possibly making it permanent. With that, entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Make the motion.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The consent agenda. Any questions, comments, anything for administration on the consent agenda?
Do I need to abstain because there's a fun run and I'm part of the district?
Well, if you do, then I do.
Uh, no. You're not benefiting financially from that. Yeah, no. Anything from anybody? Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Visitors, we don't have any visitors. Mayor's report, a couple of things here. One, in your packet, we have a vacancy on the park board, and Matthew Clemens has applied for that, and I'd like to make the recommendation to the council to appoint Mr. Clemens to the park board. Is there any questions or concerns, comments?
Uh, no, we had one applicant, Mr. Clemens, and we extended it for another month and had no other applicants, so I'd like to give him a chance. He works nights, but he believes he can get time off to come to the meeting, so just give him a chance.
Good. Sounds good. I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Matthew Clemens to the park board.
Make the motion.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, two, just want to give a quick update on the festival. Thank all the volunteers that spent their time a couple of weeks ago getting that ready for the year. Pretty decent turnout. Saturday was good for a lot of the vendors. Had great Saturdays. We're just, we're going to be working on an inclement weather notification policy. Friday night got a little hairy. Most everybody shut her down except the kickball teams that kept playing kickball with the 50 mile an hour winds and the lightning, and I'd say they were influenced by liquid. So we're working on that, and they're already planning for next year. We had a recap meeting Sunday night, and they're already starting to plan for next year, so... Any questions on that that I can pass on, or... Okay, thank you. Public forum, I don't have any cards. On to E, public hearings, the cannabis ordinance, E1.
Sure. Including your packet, you've got those items. Now, we've discussed this a little bit before. We've got this public hearing for the cannabis use in public, so you'll recall that previously council had chosen not to restrict the cannabis use, so we want to talk about it. So this is really just covering use in public. So what we'd like to do is make it similar to what we have for tobacco, which is that it would be property that's, as you can read that, you know, any kind of city property, parks, things like that, we restrict, you know, the vaping or smoking of marijuana in the same way that we do with tobacco.
Okay. Any questions, comments from council before we open up the public hearing?
Yeah, when you say similar to the tobacco, do you mean exactly the same, or is there something different?
No, it's not exactly the same wording because it's tobacco, not, you know, cannabis.
Right, but it's prohibited in all the same...
The definition of public property is the same here as it would be with tobacco. That's correct.
And that includes edibles, too?
It does. Lower potency edibles and hemp-derived consumer products.
Okay, we can open up the public hearing. We have more discussion in a minute. I'll open the public hearing regarding the cannabis use in public policy. Anybody wishes to come and say anything, come on up to the podium and share your thoughts with us. Okay, close the public hearing. My question on the edible part of it, how easy is that, I mean, is that even going to be enforceable?
Well, I mean, I can't speak for the police and their enforcement. I know that the states kind of allowed some of these things before all the testing is possible, so I know that that's included in many of the other ordinances that have been drafted throughout the state, so that's why it's included here. In terms of catching people, I guess that's the same thing with anything, you know.
Sure. Any other comments, questions, concerns from council? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Mel. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Paul. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Onto the current, the ATV policy, the ordinance, public hearing on that, so background.
Sure. So this is something that actually came out of a member of the public who came to a meeting previously this spring. Members will recall, and part of it was due to the impacts from the street project, obviously. I think that may have been a catalyst for it, but it did spur some conversation. The council directed the EMS committee to review it, which they did. I appreciate their feedback. Had a lot of good comments. Out of that, we had a previous review of this policy. There were some additional amendments the council made, and then I know I had a couple of council members who had some comments that were added to the policy too before tonight. So in front of you, we've got this, these changes, red line, so hopefully it clarifies a lot of things. It defines things properly, and the goal is to try and make this flexible, but also a positive for the community. One thing you'll note there, and number four there, police chief's feedback was, we wanted to continue to allow the golf cart usage during the Big Iron Classic, so we do allow for the permits to be granted for a period of one to 36 months instead of what was previously a little bit longer term. So obviously, that's something that will be helpful to those folks when they utilize their vehicles. I think, Josh, you're going to coordinate with the folks from the Big Iron just to make sure that they're cognizant of those situations, too, so...
Okay. Any comments, questions from council before we open up the public hearing? Okay, we'll open the public hearing regarding the ATV ordinance. If anybody has anything they'd like to share with the council, come on up. Okay, we'll close the public hearing.
There's no resolution or anything here?
No, this would be the ordinance here now. We would just approve, yep.
Okay. Any other discussion by council? Questions, comments? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the change.
Make the motion.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Community reports, ordinance revision for fences on corner lots.
Thank you. So this ordinance that's proposed came as the result of a request to place a privacy fence within a front yard of a corner lot. Now, under the current ordinance, certain fences that are over 50% transparency, sorry, less than 50% transparency are only allowed within, like, the side and rear lot. So what this ordinance would do would change that, make somewhat of an exception to that rule for corner lots, because corner lots, the way our code is defined, can have more than one front yard area. So as a consequence of that, sometimes corner lot properties would not be able to use a significant portion of their properties if they wanted to put up a privacy fence. So this was at the planning commission meeting. I had some example language at that meeting. The commissioners recommended that I change up some of the wording a bit just to make it more clear. But essentially, what I have proposed in the ordinance, I can read it here. Basically, it says that no portion of the sensor while projecting into the front yard of the property shall be 36 feet in height unless one or more of the following is met. And then it keeps the first two as originally, which was the height is required by the city for screen buffering or safety, and B, for transparency, so transparency of the fence is 50% or more. And then the C, which is the addition, says the transparency of the fence is less than 50%, provided that the property is a corner lot and the fence is placed within at least one but not all required front yard area. A conditional use permit shall be required for placement of such fences as seen in division B or below. And then skipping down to section B4, it basically just describes the process there again. Let's see. So if this ordinance revision were to be approved, like I said, it would just go through the conditional use permit process, similar to what we have right now for requests to put fences on property lines or within three feet of the property lot. So basically, it just gives planning commission more of an opportunity to review requests like that. Is there any questions?
There was quite a bit of discussion, obviously, at the planning and zoning, so, I mean, I know Dan, Paul can attest to that. Definition of what is a fence and different things, we got into the weeds a little bit, but no, I think it was pretty good, and I know that Ian made some direct changes based on the feedback from the commissioners. So I think the biggest thing here is that we don't want to be creating, you know, every corner lot would, you know, potentially require a variance right now, which means that it really doesn't qualify for variance because it's supposed to be for a special circumstance. It wouldn't be, if it was every corner lot in town, it's where we, that's when we want to change the code. It's to make it uniform. Instead of having that process, it becomes, you know, administratively kind of stupid. So anyways, I think that's kind of where you're coming from right, Ian.
Yep.
Feedback from P and Z members at all? I mean, this makes it better?
This makes it a lot better.
Just the language as it's written now, is it clear the way that...
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, Ryan or Mel? Okay. And we have the request for actions. So entertain a motion to approve the ordinance amending section 154.312 of the city code.
I'll make...
Go ahead.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Paul. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, number two, conditional use permit for the center fence.
So this was the request that started it all. So with that, basically, they're asking to place a privacy fence that's now within the front yard of their corner lot. So basically, with that, there were three conditions that were added. The two standard ones of, you know, acknowledging that it's placed within an use that can be destroyed at the expense of the property owner if necessary, and two, that access even agreements would be recorded with each of the neighboring properties. And then the third one was just waiting until the proposed revision would be passed, which was, so...
All right. Any questions from other council members? Seems pretty straightforward since we just changed the ordinance. Now it fits that for the CUP. Way to put that in good order, Ian. Any other discussion? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the conditional use permit for the center fence.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? CUP approved. The variance denial.
So originally, the city had applied for a variance, just because at the time it wasn't allowed to do that, so basically, with the ordinance change, now the variance is no longer needed. Basically, just didn't fit the need of a variance to begin with, so you're just asked to deny the variance initially now.
Okay. Any questions from council on that? Entertain a motion to deny the variance?
Make the motion.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Government at work. Okay, is it Bakken fence, condition use permit, number four?
Yep, number four. This one's pretty straightforward. Ninety-seven fifth South East Division, South Division. Just the two standard conditions associated with that one, access even agreements, and the acknowledgement of the utility.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Questions? Seems pretty straightforward. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make the motion.
Thanks, Paul. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, P and Z, for your work on that. I'm sure it was fun.
It gets easier and easier.
Defining what a fence is and isn't.
Oh, wow, that's cool.
So for these CUPs that are straightforward, is this something we can do in the consent agenda going forward, or are we not allowed to do that?
Well, typically, we haven't. Something we can research. I don't know. I don't think they usually do. Well, we have, P and Z has the hearing, and then the council chooses to approve it or not, so...
If it's boilerplate like this, I mean, I would think we could add to the consent because we can always pull it off.
If there's two others to do, then, you know, if there's one that steps out for you guys, then you will pull it out.
Almost every meeting now, we're having CUPs on fences, so...
Sure. Oh, we can take it, we can take a look.
They're different every single time, which is why they have to get the conditional use permit, so that would be my only concern in terms of running them through the consent agenda. But that's the lawyer brain, so if the actual lawyer at the table says it's not an issue, then I have no issue.
It cuts down Ian's time with the council.
Well, we'll do a little bit of research, and if it's something the council's interested in, then we can move forward. But I do think it certainly always, you know, if somebody wants to talk about it, that's why we're here, so...
Okay.
I appreciate you bringing that up, though. It's a good idea, because there are a lot of them.
All right, on to old business. Number one, update on 15 Seventh Street Northwest.
Yes, so if you'll recall my last update, the last council meeting, there was that alternative path that I followed, and since heard back to the report, included it in your packet tonight. Basically, the Min Prairie, the local affiliate, decided not to move forward with their assessment of the property. So I did go out there again today, and I included some pictures. I threw them Dropbox early today, so you can see what it looks like as of today. I haven't acted further once I received that update from the Min Prairie folks, so...
Where are those labels at? Where are the pictures labeled at?
Uh...
There's a very top of...
Very top.
Oh, I see, okay.
Fifteen Seventh Street Northwest.
I will note that, I mean, there is a, you know, the tent is now in the front yard, and the sides are up, and it's being filled with items as well, so...
The yard is full.
Yeah.
It looks like Gold Rush days.
What's that?
It looks like unorganized Gold Rush days.
Yeah. I think it's trending in the wrong direction, frankly, from the client's perspective, but...
I mean, we tried to reach out to get residents some help.
Tried for years.
Is what they need. I mean, we're not trying to be punitive, but when the neighbors are complaining, and there's rats and dead rats and other animals.
Thick raccoons.
We're probably going to have to do what we did last year in Senator Rutter to have it cleaned up by a certain date, or we'll just have to do it for, and...
Well, I know I talked with the city attorney about, you know, maybe like really abating the property, you know, taking a look at the interior, too. That's something we can force, you know, through a legal process. Because I just don't know, like, to me, the... Certainly, we can follow up what we did with last year, which is clean, but I mean, I just feel like that's a symptom, not a cause issue.
Trying to keep doing it, yeah.
And I mean, if, I don't know that financially it makes sense, you know, we can go clean it up. It's going to cost, you know, three to $5,000 for us to take it all back out to the dump, and then it's going to be assessed to our property taxes, and...
She just goes back out and brings foul back home.
Yeah, and I mean, that's just, it's not helpful to her either, so I, I mean, we'll do it over the council direct. Certainly can have a little hearing, but I guess from the city attorney's perspective, what are you seeing in other cities for this sort of thing?
Most of the cities that I deal with have these same issues, properties that they wind up abating year after year after year. It's hard to get access inside a house. It would be easier if they're having problems with, you know, sheds or outbuildings, to get access to them. But I tend to show, argue that it's spillover from inside the house, so we have to do something about inside the house to address outside. But it's an issue that cities regularly deal with and are frustrated by, because there are certain properties that are just chronic problems, and that's what you wind up doing, is cleaning them up every year.
Yeah, my experience with this has been more with derelict houses. Obviously, there's some living in this property, so, you know, previous community I worked in, we did a lot of cleanups of derelict homes where it was a landlord who was, you know, absentee landlord, and they ended up, we ended up purchasing the homes, you know, basically off the tax rolls and tearing them down. In this case, obviously, she's living there, so that isn't really something we want to delve into. But what we can do is, if that's what the council wants, you know, and direct staff, we can follow up with a certified letter to her and set up a public hearing that we'll invite her to, and give her a date to clean it up by then, and if it's not cleaned up, then you'll have a, you know, direction for us at that time.
I know we say a lot of the issue is it keeps coming back from the dump. Can we take it to a different dump instead of this one, so it's...
I don't know. I mean, I don't know that's going to solve the problem because you'll know.
I didn't know, but... Because some of similar items came back. If they're not available...
Yeah, I mean, I think the conversation with the county's been made to, you know, restrict access to the dump. I mean, that's part of the problem, is, you know, if you can't access it, that hopefully takes away that venue items, but, yeah.
Did the Min Prairie or the county, whoever sent us the letter, Min Prairie, did they say anything? Did you talk to them at all about, you know, how bad does somebody really have to be off before they do jump in and help? I mean, because she needs some help, right?
Right.
And that's what that program's for. I mean, how bad would you have to be at a property or your home or whatever it is, or that mental state, before they would jump in and help?
I'm not really aware on the specifics of that. I mean, when I made the report initially, I told them everything that I knew, so...
I think unless they're willing to accept help, they have to be in danger to themselves or someone else before you can...
Okay.
Essentially commit them.
Sure.
Which makes sense.
Sure. Okay, all right. Well, I guess we got one path forward, otherwise it's going to keep creeping.
Yeah.
Consensus to send the letter and start the process, and maybe that'll get the ball rolling?
Seems like a hard battle, but I don't think what else to do.
All right. Is that good with everybody? Yep, all right. Thanks, everybody. G2 old business, number two, resolution for the amendment of the Cassin Meadows Seventh subdivision, second phase there.
Uh, sure. Mr. Lamplin asked us to review the next phase of his subdivision. As you're aware, that was approved. The plat was completely approved, and then it was being done in phases. So you'll see there that Phase Three is the one he's going to be working on, starting, I think, maybe already starting this year, possibly next spring. I know he's kind of working with a certain home builder. So we're at that point where he's asking for us to approve this next, this next phase. So that's what we're looking at tonight. This would be amendment two for that, for that change.
Any questions? All right, I'll make the motion to approve the resolution for the Second Amendment for the Cassin Meadows Seventh. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ryan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And then G3 old business, we added at the beginning of the stop signs on Main Street, the four-way stop at Second and Main. Had a conversation with Tim last week when they were opening the road, and I asked, could you just please leave those there until the council has a chance to talk about it and see what the process is? So I don't know what the process is, but my recommendation would be to permanently put in four-way stop signs at that intersection. It really slows the traffic down on Main Street. It allows people to get out of their parking spots a lot easier. It allows people to cross Main Street a lot easier. Having, you know, I see that every day, five days a week. It's comical. I'll drink my coffee and I'll watch how many people, like the Dodge County deputy who drove right through the other day and never even slowed down. So, but I think a full-time stop sign would be great there. So I'm just looking for council feedback, and then is there a certain process? Being that it's Main Street and Cassin, do we have a jurisdiction there, or is that technically a county road?
No, it's a city.
City street?
Yeah, that area, it's a city street, I think.
Could we just...
Used to have 34.
See, you want to do that and do it, or is there a process we have to go through?
I think if you guys give us direction for that, I think it does, I know that Ian started his parking study last week, so I do think that as part of that, we would want to evaluate the whole corridor.
Sure, yep.
Do we need stop signs on any of the other intersections? Would that be beneficial or not? Ian, I don't know, but that's something we'd want to evaluate.
Sure.
But at this time, I think if the council directs, we can, we can move to have those stop signs there, you know, at least semi-permanently until, until we're... I do think that the fullest of time, we need to do some different streetscaping in that area to do some, you know, traffic calming measures, and I think stop signs could be part of that.
Any feedback from the chief? Good idea, bad idea?
I'd recommend eliminating some of the parking spots around it then, too, so the stop signs better.
Yeah, you can't.
Basically, I would if you do bump outs, too, to be able to...
And that's kind of what I'm getting at with chopping, calming, is I think if you did some sort of a bump out there, you know, it would bring the sides in closer, where people would naturally be slowing down. Plus, then you could put the stop sign there where it would be more visible. That's the only problem is where it is right now. It's like, now everyone in town who's driven there should know where it's there now.
The permanent ones would be higher, though.
The permanent ones would be higher. It'd be a little, yeah. That's why I say, I think, at least semi-permanently, because I think in the fullest time, we want to have a better end product than we would have right now, but...
So can we just, can I recommend to the council that we just leave it as it is until the parking study's done, and then let Ian do his magic with that, and then reevaluate at that time? Is anybody strongly against that?
Not against. I just wonder, we did all that surveying of people with Main Street. How long have you done the, how long have you been on the street watching?
Uh, well, I did Friday and Saturday last week. I'll do tomorrow, and then I'll have a second phase in the end of September, so the final report will be in October.
The only reason I ask is if we leave them there, which I'm fine with, does that invalidate all the responses about parking issues and driving on that street area if we change things now? Because we did all that work to collect all that data, and now we're going to make a change to that space, that we used all that time and resources to collect the data, but we're changing it before we've done the street study? I'm fine with it. I just, does that invalidate all of that, and then we didn't, we did that for no reason? I don't, I don't think...
Not necessarily think it invalidates it. I think that, you know, you know, if, I have got comments from people that they certainly liked it when we installed it.
I liked it.
So I mean, I do think that that's something we have to add as a caveat, though, that at a midpoint in this review, we did change the traffic pattern slightly, so that it made it a little different from what it was previously. So that's probably a good, something to add, so it may be an asset risk.
You also have to consider, there's stop signs on Main Street. People might choose a different road that has less stop signs, and then not drive down Main Street.
Or prefer to go down that way because they know that people will be driving slower.
Right, they want to worry about somebody coming out. I mean, that's always the issue, is you have to edge forward in the intersection almost halfway through, especially if there's a big truck parked on the corner, because you can't see anything.
Yeah, well, the bump outs will fix that.
Well, they could. I mean, that's what a lot of other towns do, absolutely. And that also allows you to still have that angle angle parking, which a lot of people have wanted to preserve, because it's a lot more stalls than if we had to apparel apparel, so...
But as far as like changing how people get east-west through town, there are so many stop signs in the northwest quadrant that it's still going to be easier to go through that stop sign and keep going if you're headed out of town to the west than it will be to cut through any other residential areas.
I mean, I have spoken to a number of people who are now using 34 more. So they used to come up to the stop light and then turn to go west on Main Street to go up to that northwest side, and now the roundabouts there, they just go through roundabout, go 34, because that's what they're used to now, because that's what they would have done naturally. And so, I mean, anyone who lives on the northwest side of town, that's kind of, that's the fast way to go, really. So for someone who's looking at trying to be, you know, speedy, I mean, plus you avoid the mini roundabout, which some people have some, you know, trepidation about. So I think that's getting a bit of positive overall. You know, it helps the traffic calming by reducing the traffic that's not stopped. I mean, we want people to stop downtown. We want to make sure that stalls over for that, so that folks who don't need to stop downtown can go through at one of the other spots.
Well, could we look at just leaving them there temporarily till the parking study, and then incorporate the rethos feedback into that same thing, and just reevaluate then?
So we still have the stop signs there on Main Street right now?
We're still there.
Did we take down the ones on Second?
Second and First, yeah.
Those ones are gone?
Those are removed, yep. I haven't been that way since the roundabout opened, so I guess I... As far as I know, when I talked to Charlie, he said they were going to take them down. They actually were looking to do some repairs on the ones on Main Street, too, so they, we're going to try and fix it up a little bit, so it's a little bit nicer.
Is that good with council?
Temporarily, until...
Okay. On the new business, inspecting community core.
So you've got a couple of items in here, and I'll let Linda talk about them. Right, Linda? Well, I can, it's fine. What this is, is I know over the last couple of years, we've had some positive, some negative feedback about our building inspection process and our vendor. And so this is an alternate company. Actually, they reached out to us earlier this summer, but I wanted to make sure Linda was involved with the discussion. So we had a nice presentation from them. They are expanding into southern Minnesota, so they're based out of Waconia, which Ian will tell you is, you know, it's a beautiful God's country, but we know that's Cassin. So, but no, they, they're looking at expanding, and so they did send us some information on it. Just wanted you to be aware that we are looking at potential other vendors for that, because, you know, the neat thing about their process is it kind of takes it from the paper product to the... Just wanted you to be aware that we are looking at potential other vendors for that, um, because, you know, the, the neat thing about their process is, is it kinda takes it from the paper product to the, the online product, where people would submit everything online. You know, the electronic plan review would be, um, I think, based on the feedback I would receive, would be a lot faster probably. There are some pluses to our current vendor, it's a local vendor and, you know, we appreciate that long time relationship that we've had with them, you know, they're, they're certainly open to working with us on a lot of things. So, just the fact that we wanted you to know, we're kind of looking at options and trying to evaluate what the best solution would be for, for Casson going forward, so.
And just anticipating that the current vendor may retire in the next few years, so we're just looking at alternatives.
Okay. Any questions on that?
If the other vendor has, has sold the business, correct, they're no longer, they work for the business, but they no longer are the owner?
I know Jay sold that to, uh, actually to the engineering firm Massey, that's bought them out, so, yep.
Do they have kind of a cost?
Um, you know, those are, that's kinda pending, you know, they wanted to evaluate service, so like I said, they're expanding in southern Minnesota, right now they do a lot of work in the metro. And other, a number of other cities in the southeast part of the state that have reached out, they're looking at adding like a full-time inspector in our area. So, I don't think that we have a hundred percent of the costs evaluated yet, but
Sure.
This is just information about, you know, kind of how it would work. Um, this Community Core is kinda their big program where everything gets submitted electronically through their, their portal and, um, like I said, I think for some folks, it might speed things up a little bit.
Okay, alright. Let us know how it goes.
Yes.
On the H two EDA banners.
So, I received a request from our Chamber of Commerce here for some financial assistance of covering the costs of the, the Main Street banners. So, included in your packets, I've included some of the mockups that they're proposing to purchase. Basically, they just highlight various amenities in our community. Citywide events that we have, anything from the festival in the park to Oktoberfest, St. Patty's Day, Roundabout Casson, yeah, so all of those there. So, the total cost of the project they have is four thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars. So, what they're requesting is a fifty percent match from the EDA, so That would be two thousand two hundred eighty-seven dollars fifty. I'll say that the EDA hasn't reviewed this, it hasn't gone before the EDA board yet. The chamber just requested that we bring it to the council, just in case.
Well, we had an EDA meeting, it's not till next month, and they had a timeline, they were hoping to be able to get that approved for beforehand. You know, the mayor had a question about the financing, so I know we've looked at the budget and we do think there may be an area, advertising budget, the EDA would have funds to make that matching grant, which would allow us to not exhaust the entirety of the facade grant program. We'd like to leave some money in that for, for other folks to utilize.
Okay. Any questions on the banners? No? Um, the EDA has that advertising budget, which we definitely use, so.
We did provide, I did provide some feedback to them and so as a result, they may be eliminating a couple of the banners or changing them a little bit, um, just because I wanna make, make sure that we're focusing on Casson primarily for the, for the banners downtown and that sort of thing, so.
The state, the theater's updated since the last time they took that picture, do they want a more updated one, or?
Well, that'd be a question too, maybe to reach out to them. I'm sure that's something that could probably pop in some new graphic art, cause you're right, that new front, front facade sign has definitely changed.
Only got two of the water towers, now we're gonna get the third one. Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Any thoughts?
Just on the ones where it lists the different things, are these, you know, it says the, uh, St. Patty's Day or the Roundabout, are these something that's gonna happen every year for sure? Do we wanna make a banner?
The chamber, that's a chamber event they've done for the last two or three years, they plan on doing in the future, so.
I just didn't wanna be spending money and then they say, ah, we don't wanna do it now.
Yeah, I think they did try to keep the, the dates for non-specific, so that's why they have like, for example, like for the festival, second weekend in August, cause they don't know what that date's gonna be, so that's gonna change over time, but. So, that, no, that's a good, that's a good question, so.
But I think putting the events on the banners definitely increases knowledge about them, because I know, the first time I went to, I think Chatfield, a million years ago, I noticed that they were promoting their festivals and it's kinda like, oh, good to know they do these.
Do city staff put the banners up?
They requested that our staff would place them up.
That's a lot more changing of banners than used to be.
I think they'll all be up all the time. I think there's just enough to be up.
All they're gonna stay here.
I know in the past when we had, cause we had banners up before and they kinda faded, we prefer that the city puts them up, cause it's on our light poles and that way it's put in correctly and Not wrecking the lamps.
I think more time than anything, but if they're gonna all stay up all year long, then.
They prefer, yeah. I think Charlie would prefer that we put them up and not, uh.
Yeah, and I mean, at some point in time, we probably will end up doing some replacements of poles on Main Street too, as part of a larger project and that'll be something we'll talk about. I don't know how exactly it'll work with Christmas lights, but I think we'll try and make that, we'll make it a, a smooth transition. Worst case scenario, the banners will go up when the Christmas lights come down and vice versa, so they'd already be on the pole, so I don't think it'll actually increase a lot of extra work for them. No, and they've done it before, we've had banners in the past, so.
Well, I guess I would make a motion that we take the money out of the EDA advertising budget to pay the fifty percent.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Yes, please.
Next, Paul. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Administrator's report.
Sure. And I did have a plaque here, what'd I do with it? I will pass that around, so, we did receive an award, I'll pass it down here, for system innovation from the municipal utilities association, so I just got back from that, that conference today and, uh, so, you know, people are speaking highly of our, you know, municipal utilities, so I appreciate the work that our supervisors put in, especially in this case, Jared Nelson, our electric supervisor, submitted us for that award and it's, uh, we're the only city to receive it, so it's certainly something that's, um, that's a positive for us. So, going into my report, there's a number of items there and some of them are, um, you know, just day-to-day operations things. Focus on that, that new law there, something that I know that we had a couple of requests from, from other entities, for example Dodge Center Ambulances requested some money from the, uh, the city for, um, for their, their services. And I know that'll be something we'll probably talking about a little bit more. They have a meeting next month to talk about the future of the Dodge County ambulance, it's, uh, something that's come up before and it's sort of the first time this year, but, um, planning zoning, we talked about those two as well. One thing I'd like to talk about a little bit is the L R I P program, that, um, the competitive grant process is opening in September. I know that Brandon and I were kind of on, thinking on the same page there, he mentioned it to me last week and I had already kind of seen that it was, they're doing some webinars on it. Basically, uh, what it is, is it's a, a program that would allow us potentially to get funding for the western leg of Sixteenth Street. Um, we were fortunate to be able to get that grant, as you recall, for the, the roundabout, otherwise it would've made that project very difficult for us to afford. Still, we were unable to finish the western leg and I get that question, I was from a lot of people. So, I think the sooner we can finish that, that's certainly something we're, we're, we think is a positive. It also would make, uh, I think we have a good case to make, um, that using that and some MSA dollars, we might be able to finish that, you know, a little bit earlier than we, I'd like to get it done in the next five years, so. So, that's something, and I don't know, Brandon, you can speak to the program itself, it's relatively straightforward. I think, you know, they, they want some sort of specific purpose in mind with it in terms of economic development or access or things like that, and I think it'd be a plus for us. So, I, I'll let you talk about that, Brandon, it's your during your report if you'd want to right now, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, alright, alright. Um, yeah, L R I P, so we actually got Sixteenth Street East, uh, we paved that road, it was through the L R I P program, um, so we're, we're good at it, we've done, we got a million dollars to pave that road. Uh, we actually applied for Sixteenth Street previously to this program, so I kind of have everything queued up, ready to go, we've already finished an application. So, obviously we'll change that, instead of doing all of Sixteenth Street, it'd be the western half of Sixteenth Street, um, so we kind of already have that ready to go. Um, I've actually talked to the county, they were, uh, gonna write us another letter of support, so it's all queued up, ready to go. Um, I'm actually looking at just adjusting the estimate to come to the more modern times and see where that number would be and then, uh, I think it'd be a great program, there's a lot of money in there, uh, so it'd be a good opportunity for the city to look at that.
Okay.
So, yeah, letting you update there, so I mean, we'll have some kind of a approval from council, probably in September.
We'll get to that point, yep.
Yeah. Um, the other one I wanted to just discuss a little bit more is the Park and Rec update, so there are a number of items that Park and Rec took a look at last week, we had a good conversation. There was a, um, potential for putting in a, um, I don't know if you call it handicap, but it's an enabled swing, so it's multi-use for a lot of folks, would be able to use it. And we looked at an option that the park supervisor had kinda brought to us, which was close to a hundred thousand dollars and it, the, the board, I think after discussion, sort of decided that they would go with a different model. That we think will be kind of a first phase and hopefully in a larger project, but it's, uh, more affordable, it's very close to what they have over in Byron. So, if you've been to Byron's East Park by their ball dimes, they have kind of a, an enabled park for a lot of folks to use and they have a similar type of swing that I think we would utilize, most likely in Veterans Park, so I think that'll be a real positive. We also talked about the cameras out in the, uh, the park, unfortunately there was some vandalism during the festival and I know that, um, you know, very young children who are involved in this, who are, you know, not even at the teenage level and so, we are looking at installing additional cameras also at Lions Park, so that's something that's upcoming. Um, we, we do have one out there now, I think we'll be adding some more. And they're much lower cost than originally looked at, so originally I think when Ron was here, he was looking about a five thousand dollar system, we've been able to, to get a little bit more mobile cameras with modern technology that are much more cost-effective and they, um, they get good data, they actually have the ability to talk. So, I know that Ben mentioned that he saw some kids that were out at the, uh, at the rec, um, at the concession stand out there, he watched them for a while where they were banging away at things and he, he told them that they, you know, the cops are coming and, uh, you know, so to, to leave and they took off, you know? So, I mean, that's a plus, because we really, you know, to me, I think the thing is we wanna make sure that these kids, uh, um, basically, we wanna slap them down now, because when they get older, you know, the consequences only get a lot worse in the long run. I know Josh, they had, they had, the feedback was, well, what can the police do? And I think the, the answer was, well, there isn't a lot they can do necessarily always, especially with kids that are, you know, under, under fifteen or sixteen years old, so I don't know if you've got any feedback for a Park and Rec from them?
Ben likes the, the cameras he got right now, so.
Yeah.
Haven't had many problems. People see the camera when they turn.
So, anyway, so that's from Park and Rec and, uh, so no, some good things going on there. And then I also have in your packets there, under, um, the next item there is, we do have an updated copy of the budget. So, uh, and unfortunately I wasn't able to get it today until right at five o'clock, but you do have your copy in there with last year's previous numbers, so there was a request from council member to, uh, to see the twenty-two finals. So, those are included and hopefully they're alright. I haven't had a chance myself to review it completely, but just so you, you know, they're under I one, there, there is an updated version there, um, that you could take a look at. So, obviously budget time is coming up quickly, um, you know, we've got this preliminary budget kind of laid out, um, some of the percentages and changes on things, you could see certain departments are jumping, some are going down. But, um, if you have any feedback, I'll be looking forward to any feedback council members have for, for me, um, over the next two weeks. We're planning right now, I think, on having our budget meeting, I think it's the thirteenth of September, isn't it Linda? So, as we have in the past, we'll plan on having our preliminary levy meeting that night, uh, however, we do have time, if something comes up or we wanna make changes, tweaks to it, um, we certainly can and then submit it at that second meeting in September as well.
Did you see that's in the packet?
Um, it's, it should be in your Dropbox under I.
Well.
You wanna bring that one up, Ian?
All the way down at the bottom?
Yeah, under my report.
Was the li, library had something big planned, they were looking for more funding?
They do have a, a larger jump, I think they're looking at about, let's see here, I think theirs was gonna be like eleven percent, so if you look at their spreadsheet, let me go down to library here.
Is that slide thirty-six?
Is it? Okay.
So, the library, I was wondering if that's.
Yeah, so one thing that I have to figure in still is some of the revenues, so we are just finalizing our pool from the year, so the Aquatic Center revenues, so we have draft expenditures for next year, but some of the draft revenues haven't been, been added in there yet, so.
Do we know what that eleven percent's going towards?
Um, I know that they, and I met with Councilor Ferris, she discussed, I think, uh, one of the items is a, uh, like an e-reader or a, an electronic checkout machine. And I think I've seen, when I've looked myself at different quotes, that are a little bit less than what they're looking at, but depends on, we wanna make sure that it's, uh, it's compatible with their system. So, that's something that we'll kind of get some feedback from Selco, I think, on. Um, they're also additionally looking at some personnel changes they'd like to do, which would increase the cost of their HR, you know, from an HR, human resources perspective. So, that's I think about ten grand and, uh, what, what else the other item?
The other thing was, they're, they're looking to do over a period of time, so starting to, to the process now of adding new bookshelves. And you don't just go to Ikea to get library bookshelves, they have to be, and so we have a quote from the local millwork company to do that and, um, they're, they're not cheap. But also as part of adding that e-reader, they need to add a section on to the circulation desk.
Sure.
So, it's, a lot of it is that and then part of it was also increasing the ebooks and audiobooks selection, because it's not very great right now. And I know I've heard that from people that are pretty hardcore users of it, that there's just not that great of a selection, so, those were, those were the largest things.
And, and I have advised the library director and I'm planning on attending the September meeting for the library board too, that, um, I think that the increase they're looking for this year, it may be unrealistic. It's a, it's a double-digit increase and we're asking a lot of our departments to certainly be in the single digits, so it may be kind of one of those, well, what is your top priority this year, you know, and then, or maybe we start doing like, a lot of departments, what we do is like year one of three. We say, okay, if you wanna do shelves or we wanna do X, Y, and Z, we'll start putting away five thousand dollars a year for a fifteen thousand dollar item. I think that that's kind of what we've encouraged in the past. We have a new, um, you know, department head there and this is her first budget process, so I think that, um, you know, we're gonna have a good give and take on that. Uh, one of the other ones I wanted to highlight is the ice arena, so we do have a scheduled loss in the ice arena for next year, um, which is, it's a little higher than last year's, that is continuing to be something where we have that. Now granted, that loss is a split loss with the county, so, but the revenues we've, you know, the revenue estimates from, from Howie there at the ice arena, he's expecting about a forty-six thousand dollar loss, so. Now granted, that includes having a full-time employee there, so we expect the personnel costs will be a little lower because of the healthcare savings, um, but, you know, if they were to have that in the, and that is another thing we don't know yet. I know Linda will be working on that over the next couple of weeks here, will be our healthcare costs, so we do have a, a little higher healthcare cost figured in. We're hoping that we don't see that big of a jump. Last year we saw about a nineteen and a half percent jump, so we had budgeted a twenty percent jump and we had nineteen and a half, so I'm, I'm hoping that we don't see that big of a jump, but that's something where we have to be aware that in this area, and as you all know, we, we live in this area, we have good healthcare, but it does, it does cost.
Did we stay with Peep?
What's that?
Did you stay with Peep? I can't remember.
Um, no, actually last year we shifted from Peep to a Blue Cross Blue Shield kind of small group plan.
We're staying with Blue Cross Blue Shield, we're not through anybody.
I saw that Peep now, that they're over fifteen percent, you can get out of there.
I've heard that too and our insurance agent told me he'd be surprised if we got anything over ten. But still, nobody will take us. We can't get into a group. We tried to get into Southeast Service Call Up and they said no.
So, we'll see how that goes. We should know a little harder number hopefully pretty soon and, um, I think we've tried to take a conservative approach. As I said, the biggest thing now is, you know, sort of picking down, um, what we can take out of expenditures ahead of this levy process and then looking at revenues a little bit more in detail. Any questions on budget?
Okay, on number two. Go ahead, Linda.
Ian, can you bring up the next one? I two. Um, the map that you have in Dropbox, this was brought to my attention by Mr. Finger, because he put in his sidewalk on his extra lot as he was instructed. We sent out letters.
Two years ago.
And I wanna, two years ago?
Mm-hmm.
Giving them a year to put the sidewalk in. Mr. Finger is the only one who has complied. Still, there's two, um, properties in that picture that have not complied and there's three other properties in town that have extra lots that don't have sidewalks out of. These extra lots, as you can see, are being utilized, so it's not like, they're still separate parcels and they're still separate, um, pieces of land. But they're utilizing them with sheds and plantings and, and everything else, so it's not like they're on the market to sell. So, what our question is, is how far do you want us to go? Do you want us to send another letter? Do you want us to give them, you know, more time? Do you want us to, what do you want us to do?
Was there a fine for not having it completed by a certain date?
Well, the previous council, um, direction was that if the lots were not combined, you know, because for example, they could be sold to someone else. So, the council direction was, well, if it's a standalone lot, then we don't have, we, our, sorry, our hands are a little bit more tied on that. So, you know, we did send out a series of letters, some of these folks came back, Mr. Finger came back and said, well, you know, he, his lots merged, so the county, you know, it's not gonna split it off likely. Whereas these other lots, as you can kind of see, are still separate parcels, the direction was, well, if it's a sellable lot, then they don't have to install the sidewalk, so we just wanted to see if there's any change in direction from council.
And our coordinate says that a sidewalk doesn't have to be put in until something is being built on it.
But there are things built on the two that are visible in these pictures?
I'm sorry?
There are things that are.
You can see they got sheds there.
One I can see a shed, the other one I'm not sure.
The other one looks like they got a fence around.
The other one looks like they got a fence going right across the property line.
Correct.
So essentially, they merged the lots, they just didn't do it at the county.
Well, they didn't do it at the county level. And the three other lots are all the same in town. One of them, they actually made a, I think if they call it a healing garden or a cancer garden, it's got a little path through it. It's over on 12th Street Northwest. And they don't have a sidewalk on the north-south edge of their property.
Corridor, yep.
Kind of neighbor on that same street added a sidewalk on his property that went to nowhere.
Right. And, yep.
She was told to, yep.
If it's not for sale, then it's not a saleable lot, they need to put the sidewalk in.
Well, I mean, that's the direction of council and we can certainly follow.
They don't have a permit, it's not listed for sale, they're intending to use it, right?
Yeah, I mean, just because they haven't gone through the process of combining it.
It's been two years.
Right. I have no problem with that. I mean, they're being used, they're not being sold. So, in my opinion anyway. Anybody else?
Can we count the fence and the shed as structure and just say that's enough structure for us to say that you should have put those in?
You know, the council determines that, I guess. In most case, if you, I mean, certainly a shed could be a structure, a fence might be a little harder, but it is a construction, you know.
Putting the fence that connects to your other property.
Seems unlucky that would be split off.
Yeah.
The only one I can see is maybe cables because that shed, if it's less than 200 square feet, you don't consider that a structure. Doesn't have to have a building permit. And, you know, I don't see any other plantings on his extra lot, just, it's just plain. But the other one on the north side with the fence all the way across the tree lining the yard, I don't. I wouldn't think that one could even be for sale or you got to take all that out or the fence down.
Well, I appreciate that Mr. Finger's did complete his project. That's what we asked, so I just thank you for that.
We make everybody else put sidewalk in. And if you're not trying to actively sell it, then it's basically your backyard, you're mowing, you're maintaining it like a backyard.
We want that continuous flow for...
Right, it doesn't make any sense not to have.
We don't want sidewalks to nowhere.
I mean, I guess my perspective is just, you know, council needs to be aware, like, we'll give, you know, we certainly can send letters out again. And we have to set a timeline, I think. And then at some point in time, you know, the council probably will get feedback from these property owners, you know, and they may not like the choice that the council's made. But it's, I mean, so just so you know, like, you know, if we're going to take this action, we need to be firm in our convictions on it, I think. Yeah, I mean, list the lot for sale.
Put in the sidewalk. Give them a year or...
Time frame, we're already done to August, beginning of September.
They're close enough where they might easily find one company to come do both at the same time.
Well, here's a question. So, I mean, what are we, what's the feedback from council if somebody says, well, I'm not opposed to putting the sidewalk in, but I can't pay for it? You know, do we offer a petition waiver so we install the sidewalk and then we assess that back to their taxes? Is that something that council will be open to? We've done it in the past with the grinders and the, you know, some of the issues of people's sump pumps and things like that, of that nature.
If they're fine, if they're fine with it, yeah. Gets the project done, they pay for it?
I mean, ideally, you know, realistically, if we have people signing on, I would love to say, okay, we'll go out, we'll bid this, we'll get some of these done all at once because it is hard to get someone, a vendor, I know that. I know that it's not easy, there's not a lot of concrete people and trying to get a small project done. I mean, Mr. Finger did the project himself, which isn't always the best, you know, solution, but he did comply with the way I asked him to do, so I appreciate that, so.
And we've only got five properties.
Yeah. We reach out to the five, get the feedback from them and then get back to some of that. We'll put it that way. Okay.
Do they have to be wider than the ones around them?
I think we would ask them to be uniform with the subdivision. So if it's a five-foot sidewalk, we'd want it to be five foot if it's a four. I think those are four-foot sidewalks in that neighborhood, but I'd have to check.
Just for the uniformity would be nice.
That's right, yeah. We've run into that, I know on the northeast side where we have a four-foot sidewalk that goes to a five-foot sidewalk and back to a four-foot sidewalk, so.
That's because we had changed it, and I don't know if we changed it in the ordinance, but we had changed it saying that we had to go to the five foot.
That's right.
We would have to check that for even here, because if we did change ordinance...
Sure.
Yeah, we might have to.
Yeah, I think we can, well, we'll certainly work with them to make sure we get the best result we can. So, okay, that'll be the direction. Ian, you got what you need and work with Linda on that.
Is this something that doesn't happen in the new developments anymore? Like, do they put in streets and sidewalks ahead of time?
Sidewalks go in when houses get built.
Because they'll get damaged going in.
Buyer pays for it.
So in any of the new developments that are happening, somebody could buy two lots and only build in one and the builder will only put the sidewalk in on one of them, huh? So that's why we end up with situations like this?
Yeah, right.
Interesting, okay.
Okay, on to the engineers' report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Three items tonight. The first one is a resolution to potentially award a contract for the 2023 sanitary sewer improvements. So you can see, there was an updated resolution, put it in your Dropbox, I think emailed off. We did receive three bids for the project. If I can get it pulled open here. We had an engineering estimate about $700,000. You can see the bids did come in over that. Hazelwood Construction was a little bidder at $783,000. Vicious Sewer was more, the second bidder at $793,000. The Municipal Pipe and Tool Company was about $816,000. We went back to our engineering estimate where we're at. We ultimately had some spot repairs in Highway 57 and 34 that are concrete roadways that actually were, that we underestimated that we didn't account for. So that was what we looked at when we looked back at our engineering estimate. With that said, you can see the bids are pretty close there, which is always a good sign from when engineers bid projects, we look to make sure that they're close and they are there. So with that said, I'll answer any questions and ask for you to consider passing the resolution to authorize staff to enter in a contract to complete the work.
Questions for Ben?
Entertaining a motion to approve the resolution awarding the contract to Hazelwood Construction for the 2023 sanitary sewer improvement project. Thanks Ryan, do I have a second?
One second.
No, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed.
Josh Carres, thank you.
All right, second item. There's a request for council action with two kind of sheets there, attachments to it. We are in the East Creek Commercial Park 2. It's a proposal the developers have been discussing with city staff. So we're kind of discussing some things with them. So ultimately, want to bring it to you as a council and get some direction on how we want to proceed. So I'll maybe start with the map that Ian's got pulled up there. Ultimately, if you could pull the other map up, gives maybe, there you go, a little bigger overview. So there, the developers looking at developing is that purple box with the red line through it. That is ultimately East Creek Commercial Park 2. That would ultimately be in the area between the end of Behind City Hall here at Commerce Drive into East Creek Commercial Phase 1. In that area, so that area, box area is kind of the current parcel. The developers looking at developing the far east side and constructing one building, so ultimately splitting the lot on the east side there through the plating process in that hatched area in purple there. The area in red is an area of town that is served by substandard water main. It's not looped. So on that blue line in there is water main, all those little dots are fire hydrants. We don't have that system looped. It goes underneath the railroad tracks. We ultimately don't even know where it goes underneath the railroad tracks. So it's been on our list. And if you remember back, last winter, we were looking at at the council workshop about creating a loop in there, which would be that red kind of line in there that is what we're calling water main loop. So ultimately, if the water main does go down like it did when we constructed the storm sewer in front of the fire hall, we shut down the Linden Manor area, that whole area in red there. I think it was a day or two because it wasn't looped and we couldn't backfeed it. So from a public works water operation standpoint, it's definitely a loop that's been on our radar for quite some time. Public Works staff would just like us to go through and get this loop done anyway, regardless. So I think the discussion kind of goes around, when does it get built, right? Because if the purple box was built in its entirety, if that was being proposed by the developer, the developer would ultimately connect both ends of the water main, would have a loop water main, we wouldn't have any skin in the game, it would not be any cost to the city. That's not necessarily happened. The developers indicated they're not interested in doing that. It's going to be a commercial area, there's commercial lots to the east and, I'm sorry, to the southwest there. Commerce Drive right here by City Hall, there's some out south at 14. So again, they're looking at just one of, that's constructing the far east side. And that ultimately is served, if you go around, Ian, if you go to your other map there, is really served by kind of the end of that roadway there. I think you see the box there is the proposed building. End of that roadway and there's already kind of water and sewer right adjacent to the site. So ultimately, staff looked at it from the perspective of, you know, the city does have the ability to say, we're not building out in this area anymore until we get this water main figured out. And that was a discussion when we were talking to the same developer about doing a next phase of Linden Manor, we're not going to put 50-plus houses on the substandard water main. This obviously is not as straightforward because it is just one structure in an area that kind of already has water main. So in the request for council action, we do have an opinionated cost. Really, it's just extending a water main, don't have to tear up any roads or anything. So, you know, we just threw out $100,000, not a large project in what we deal with in public works perspective. And then we have three options there. One, require the developer to construct the water main loop as a condition of a plat approval. You have that ability as a city, but it's not, in my opinion, quite that simple because really it's just one lot adjacent to a road and a water main that already exists. And then the second part is requirement the developer to dedicate an easement and then the city constructs the water main at the city's expenses. And that's what we're considering from the public works standpoint. The developer has indicated is willing to dedicate that easement if the city is interested in constructing the water main. The third option there, require the developer to dedicate that easement and then negotiate a cost share for the developer, just due to that water main being a benefit to the property, right? Because if we had taken the stance, development pays for development, we could view that as a benefit to that property. And then we also put in here, we could also defer that cost. So when the residual property that is not currently proposing to develop, that could be a cost that could be due at that time through a development agreement process to say, hey, there's a certain percentage of this, $100,000, that we think the development should pay. We're willing to, just in the sense of time, the city jump in and construct it, but looking at covering a portion of it if the council so directs us to do that, that is another option. So again, we at staff level are looking from directions, we're kind of at an impasse with the developer. Developer said, I want to build, I don't want to construct anything else. And we said, well, hold on here, we have an issue we probably need to address. So we have a safe water main system and not only for this lot, but the whole area. Somebody pause there and see if you have any questions or thoughts.
If we go in and do it ourselves and they, once we put it in, can that developer come later and say, now I want to develop all this bigger rectangle chunk that's not being developed?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then are we, and that last option, we can come back and ask for something from them.
Now, we're just obviously putting that out there as an option to the council. So say the residual property, the other part of the rectangle, we would make a development agreement recording this property since when property is developed, this cost needs to be recovered. We did the same thing for 16th Street with the Shutey property. Said this road, really could be argued, half of the road is your cost, quick trip. Agreed to pay for a portion of the other part of the project and said, when you develop this property, then it's in turn do something similar. And this is, you know, obviously a little lesser scale than what we're dealing with up there, so something similar. Again, we could hold the ground and say, you know, you're proposing to plat the purple box, all of it. We could tell the developer that they have to build water main to plat it limits and that's planning 101 and we have the right to do that. But on the other side, I respect the developer saying, I can't really build commercial lots, I'm not ready, we have other commercial lots available in town. So I want to be respectful of the developer too and where the market is, because the market's what the market is.
And there's the desire for that water loop from the city, just to serve our citizens and residents better, you know, with a better water pressure and better water quality and that sort of thing.
Yep. Same thing on 16th Street. You know, we had a schedule, we wanted to do it. We could have dug in with that developer and said, we're not going to do anything. You can build all of 16th Street? Well, that's not a, wasn't going to be a good outcome for anybody. So working with them a little bit with respect to time and how things get put together.
I like the, coming back afterwards and saying, once you're ready to do the rest, like we did with 16th. I like that option versus just saying, do it yourself.
Because then the developer would incur 100% of that cost too, so.
Anybody else?
I think regardless of whether this is getting developed or if it's farmland, the city wants that in there. And $100,000 seems like a small price to pay to not have to shut somebody's water off when we need to do repairs on sections of this pipe. How long was it off the last time they had to shut it off?
I don't remember, it must have been a day or two? Or was it, we knew it was going to be a problem and sure enough, it was a problem. So it was, it's tough. And I'm scared, you know, railroad, underneath the railroad tracks, not ideal. We lose that water main, we're in an emergency situation. I mean, we were set up as part of a construction project, knew we were going to have to deal with it, dug it up, dealt with it and it was still, I think, at least a day. If we all send in an emergency repair now, unrate that railroad tracks, I mean, we're scrambling to get, I mean, it'll be maybe a week, you know?
Yeah, and I mean, this easement is kind of cutting right across the property there, so any future development's going to be a little bit hampered by having that water main running right under a potential building, so.
It looks that way, but there's actually a sanitary sewer easement that follows that corridor now.
Oh, there's already, there's already an easement there?
Correct, for a sanitary sewer, so just be extending that easement. And we've already indicated with the developer that we'd want to make sure that, to your point, that their future growth options can accommodate this water main and work that into any future grading. So we're working with him on that, or will be if we're moving forward, and his developer to make sure kind of everything gets pulled together. But it's already kind of hindered by that sewer line. Plus the, the higher floodplain kind of comes through there, so it's a little bit restricted just naturally for two of those items.
This is all agriculture right now, or?
Yeah.
Yep. I mean, it's zone, it's not really a zone for agriculture, but it's sort of an open plain area, yeah.
Yeah, it's undeveloped, you can see.
Oh, it's not tilled?
Yeah, I don't think that. You do hay out there? So the developer's here too, so certainly he can just speak to.
Do I have an opinion?
Yeah, go ahead. Do you do hay out there or what do you, you just do hay kind of, don't you?
A pasture.
pasture field, yeah. Pasture field, yeah.
Is that larger rectangle going to be commercial as well?
I believe that's in the future land.
Guided for, for, I think the whole area is guided for commercial right now.
Ian, anything?
Oh, I'm kind of like torn, it benefits the city, but it benefits the property owners, so I was looking at, how do we make it an agreement? You know, yes, we get the easement, but do we get a partial money as it develops? Because without it, they would not be able to add any more commercial property, because they wouldn't have the water supply, but yet it benefits cities, I mean, it's a benefit to both, but not a hundred percent to the builder, and, and I don't think it's a hundred percent to the city, that's the, that's where I'm at, it's like, but where do you find the common ground to make it work? Because it's a benefit for everybody.
And then the, that, the developer does own additional land, uh, to the east too, so, we did have the conversation, uh, when Linden Manor Two was potentially coming in, that, that water line, I would be very strongly at that point that that water line had to get figured out before we approve additional work there. Again, this is one building, and the water's already there, so.
Sure, sure.
You know, just to be totally transparent, it's, it's not as, it's not as concerning to me as, you know, putting another 50 houses on that dead end water line.
Have approval to approach the council?
Mm-hmm.
I just have a assessment for all of what I paid in 2004 for water and sewer service, um, up to that stretch of that lot. So that part's been paid, and now I'd just like to look onto it use.
Thank you.
And I really shouldn't be referred to as developer, even though I am asking to split a lot off. Those days are done.
You brought the pasture.
And, uh, yeah, and, uh, the other previous mention, the same developer wanted to do 52 lots, no, that wasn't me.
Okay.
It was your land, though, right?
Nope.
On Marty, right?
For 52 lots?
Yeah, Linden Manor.
No, that, it was on my property, it was, maybe had to be applied for, but if he'd had approval to do it, he would have purchased it.
Got you, okay.
Okay.
I mean, it's a project that's guided down, from the state's perspective, so I, I would say that we direct staff to go back and meet with Mr. Marty, and come up with the best that we can come up with, but the city paying for the majority, the, or all, would be my opinion. Because we have to get this done, and you've got, uh, sorry, date up to that point.
Uh, from my standpoint, option two is the only one I'll look at.
Okay.
There's no plans to develop the rest of it, and really don't know how far down the road that would be, there's no need for it.
Thanks, Tom. Council, any opinions?
So that, let's staff take care of it, and come back, let us know what you come up with.
Sounds good.
You know, I think everybody's expressed their opinion, we want to see the project get done, it's, uh, important projects get done, so.
Because if we have to turn somebody off for how long the next time, who knows? But, uh, not opposed to that at all.
Sure. Okay, anybody else? Anything? No, anything?
No.
Okay, you have a copy of this?
Yeah.
I'll let you keep have that.
Thanks, Tom, appreciate it.
So lastly, uh, on my agenda here, project updates, um, so 57 is obviously open, it's not done, there's still some things to do, they still have to paint the wall, uh, there's some pumpsless stuff that they're working on. Um, we had a public meeting on Monday night for the 2023 street project, that's the reclaimed and paved section of the town, so we invited all, uh, the property owners there, um, they're looking at constructing that project, uh, likely next week. Uh, so told the homeowners, when the barricades go up, be looking at, uh, not parking on the street during the day. Um, so it was a good meeting, it was well attended, um, working with the veil developers, and we've kind of got the slug of information back to them on the next phase of veil, the sand companies, so that's moving forward, so. Expecting that that likely be like a spring construction project back before the council this winter, um, so that's, uh, moving forward. I mean, then going back to the previous discussions on Second Street and Main, or Second Avenue and Main Street, uh, we are looking at paving, um, the liquor store parking lot and the Legion, or behind the Legion, that city lot back there, uh, we do that, we're likely to be tearing up Second Avenue, put some storm sewer in, so maybe get an opportunity to, uh, look at extending that project up, and I was even maybe going to propose to bring it all up to Main Street, well, if we're going to put some bump outs in or start tearing it and doing some permanent stuff, that might be something, unless the council directs otherwise, I can talk to Public Works staff and kind of get a game plan of what that may look like. Um, I think that'd be in our best interest to maybe roll it into that project, because we're already going to be there, we're already making a mess, and we're already going to have concrete and asphalt there, so. Um, unless you guys object or want to direct otherwise, um, I think it could be a good opportunity and look at that.
You could give us what it would be to add that on, you know, do it like you normally planned, and then if we did extend it, here's the extra cost, so we know.
Come with a roll-off cost estimate, I will tell you bump outs from an engineering perspective, with storm sewer and drainage has become kind of a little problematic, and.
I, I.
Next thing you know, next thing you know, we're reconstructing the whole intersection, reconstructing all the sidewalks.
I saw some lovely concrete layers.
You've never plonked it all before.
Uh, they would jerk just fine, you could move them in the winter time, it'd be perfect.
So I, I don't want to blow the whole intersection up.
I've seen them where they don't move them in the winter, because they don't want to.
That's right.
There's next move, I mean, you take front loaders, you can lift them up and move them in the winter, and, I mean, there's different ways to.
Have them in Pine Island.
Yep.
Sometimes they forget to remove them, they just push them to the side, so.
Yeah, look, look at our options, that's good with everybody, I mean, we're going to be doing work in the area anyway, why not?
Doesn't hurt to at least figure out what it costs.
Yep, see what it is, see how it fits into Ian's study he presents to us, not to over.
Okay, I think that was all I had.
Okay, you could pass on to Min Dot my perspective, that, uh, for the most part, except for the one finger, um, the response to the roundabouts has been overwhelmingly positive. Um, at 11:50 today, I was going home for something, and I watched a low boy come through from the north, and he weaved around, the tires, and the back tires barely went over the drive over part, the rest of it, he hit perfect, so, yes, a low boy can go through there, no problem. So, uh, overwhelmingly positive, I mean, I had people that were really against it and stood here and kind of yelled at us, had to admit to one guy, he's like, wow, it's kind of nice. Hmm, okay, so pass that on to them.
Well, good, we had the same feedback after we put one in by right on the front of the road, so.
Overwhelmingly positive, so. Thanks, Brandon, for all your help on that.
Okay, uh, the personnel approved, uh, approval to move Tony Jensen from Park Streets to the water wastewater operator position.
Sure, so, um, we do have a vacancy there with Mr. Tho's departure, so, uh, we did have that, um, internal application for Mr. Jensen in accordance with the union contract, um, he's going to be shifting over there, so we're asking for that, would also, uh, need to backfill his position in the Park Streets. So that does leave us with a, a, a street department, that's a short one, as I said, and then, um, you know, we're, we're looking at that, so I guess that'd be the first thing, would be those two items.
Okay. Any question on Mr. Jensen? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the move from Park Streets to water wastewater operator position.
Make that motion.
Thanks, Dan, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and then we need approval to backfill that Park Streets position, now, before we do that, we need that?
Well, based on the.
Just asking, since we have the vacancy.
Yeah, based on the feedback from staff, you know, it, we will need it, you know, it depends on the workflow, fortunately, it's coming at a time where their summer work is starting to, to end, some of the tree cutting and things like that. Um, and we still will be utilizing all the staff as we have in the past for snow plowing this winter.
Okay.
So Mr. Jensen just very recently got his CBL, last year, he was hired in January, he didn't have it, he was able to get the CBL this spring, uh, along with one of our other employees, so, we'll be utilizing that, so if we do end up hiring somebody who doesn't, you know, that'll, it'll kind of work the way it did last year, so. I'm not as concerned about the snow plowing, but I do think in the fullness of time, we, we do want to backfill that position.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Oh, boy, thanks, Paul, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I don't like being judge. Uh, authorize the hiring of, uh, water wastewater operator two.
So, um, as I mentioned, we do have that, we had, uh, Isaac Tho, and then we also have, uh, have Jeff, who's taking that, you know, temporary promotion, the council authorized. That does leave us with the one vacancy at operator two, and we did have another person who had applied, um, for the, the, the lower vacancy, who has the, the C's licenses, so he would potentially be qualified for the operator two position. Um, just knowing how difficult it's been for us to find those licenses, I mean, Tony's coming over, and he doesn't need the licenses, so he's kind of starting at zero. Um, that, it works in tandem with the resignation, uh, that you see there from, from Dave Vos, and also, um, so we're just trying to see what would make the most sense staffing-wise in terms of, um, you know, how the workflow works and that sort of thing. If it works out for Jeff, and he can continue to be that supervisor, you know, fill in that role, then we want to have an operator who's got those, he's got a C water license and a C sewer license. I think that that's kind of what the staff's recommending to me, is that we take a look at that, I'm just knowing that the licenses are, you know, we, we haven't had a lot of, uh, success in getting those folks who have applied. We are looking at potentially filling, um, the A capacity license at the plant with some sort of combination of part-time, um, it seems that it's been effective for Stewartville, that's what they've been able to do, is they've had someone who comes in and does the check-offs for the plant. Um, it's not ideal, obviously, but it is something that would allow us to continue to operate properly and, and would be a cost savings, because we wouldn't have the healthcare cost then for that person as well, as well as, they're required to have 10 hours a, um, week, so we would have fewer hours we'd be paying out as well.
So, if we back, if we hire for that position, 12 months goes by, Jeff for some reason can't get, you know, doesn't get the license, that still leaves room for him to back, because in that agreement, he goes back in his position.
Yeah, so right now, we, we have two funded.
We're not over staffing where we have to.
Yeah, we're just, we're filling that.
Yeah, we're not going to have a problem with that happening, I mean, hopefully it doesn't happen, but if it does, we're good with that.
Well, right, so I mean, ideally, he gets the, he gets the, uh, the B, the B's license, and then he would fill the role that, um, Dan Trapp had, Dan was the lead, he had that B license.
Okay.
So ideally, he would slide in there, we would have those two operators at the C level, um, in that kind of way. So, because I, I mean, I want to blow the budget, but I also know getting qualified staff has not been easy for us, or anybody else, frankly, in the market right now.
Okay, just making sure we weren't causing a.
Absolutely.
Potential problem.
Right, for the short term, mostly a cost savings, because we'll have a net difference between the supervisor salary and the operator two.
Okay, anybody else got questions on that? Okay, entertain a motion, authorize the hiring of another water wastewater operator two.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan, do I have a second?
Second.
Ryan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you, and next is the resignation of, uh, Dave Velson, uh, water wastewater supervisor, like to thank him for his use of service, and wishing the best in his retirement. Uh, with that, I will take a motion accepting his resignation.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Mel, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Paul.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Um, next is going to be the attorney's report, we're going to go to a closed session, but is there any questions on correspondence before we go to that, in case somebody here needs to hear anything about correspondence?
Just some notes there, so Rochester's, their RPU's got their new rates out, so I, it's always interesting to see in our market area, and then Senator Nelson, we appreciate her work on getting that money for the, uh, the bonding project, that, uh, she's been suffering with some medical issues, so we appreciate that, I know she's, um, she's doing better now, but that heart surgery she had was quite a, quite a big thing for her, so.
Okay, thanks, Tim, all right, with that, are we going to record this? Okay, uh, we are going to close the meeting, and we'll be recording that for a possible land transaction, when that's done, we'll reopen the meeting, uh, so with that, we're going to close the, the meeting.